All right, the highly anticipated career ladder presentation is next. And of course, the work related to the career ladder initiative crosses across many departments and areas from HR to, you know, certainly John's been involved from a financial perspective and then our professional learning and leadership team as well. So many hands have made fingerprints on this incredible program. But we're going to hear from Dr. Leslie Hughes and Mrs. Tracy Weston, our Director of Learning and Leadership, is going to unveil sort of a high-level look at the career ladder and what it means and why this is an important part of our recruit and retain initiatives. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Oh, another, it's a very finicky computer today.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Good afternoon, Chair Shay, members of the board and Drs. Cashwell. As Dr. Cashwell stated, my name is Leslie Hughes and I'm the Chief Learning Officer. And with me this afternoon is Tracy Weston, Director of Professional Learning and Leadership. Together, we will present the board with an update of the HCPS Career Ladder, which will begin during the 2022-2023 school year. As some board members may recall, plans began on the career ladder well over two years ago. While the pandemic slowed our work just a bit, we are now ready to climb the ladder to ensure further opportunities exist to recruit, retain, and reward staff. While Dr. Weston and I represent the Division of Learning, as Dr. Cashwell said, plans for the career ladder have been a multi-division effort. Staff in the Division of Finance, as well as Human Resources, have also partnered in our work. I would like to take a moment to ask them to stand and be recognized at this time. At the end of the presentation, staff from all three divisions will be available to answer questions. It is important to note that the work of the Career Ladder is in direct alignment with one of the strategic goals of Destination 2025, which states that HCPS will recruit, retain, and reward educators who nurture the whole child. Before climbing the ladder, let's take a moment to discuss what a career ladder is and why it is important to develop a common understanding of this approach. A career ladder is a method by which an employee can progress and develop within an organization and is a personalized approach to professional learning and career pathways. It also provides employees with an ongoing mechanism to enhance their skills and knowledge. So why is a career ladder important? We know HCPS, like our counterparts in the region and nation, are experiencing a staff shortage. And that addition to taking steps to ease that shortage, we must continue to strive towards recruitment and retention efforts, many of which you heard in today's earlier presentation. A career ladder allows HCPS to take recruitment and retention one step further. Once implemented, HCPS will lead the region in providing innovative compensation opportunities to invest in our employees. Based on research, increased career satisfaction, decreased levels of attrition, and more engagement in professional learning are all benefits of a career ladder. So let's take a moment to look at the timeline for teacher classification structure. Prior to 2019, the HCPS Teacher Compensation Structure consisted of two pay grades, grade 28 for teachers holding a bachelor's degree and grade 29 for teachers holding a master's degree. Before 2019, attainment of a master's degree provided the only option for teachers to advance to a higher salary grade. Beginning in 2019, 2020, a third pay grade was added to the compensation structure, which is grade 30. This grade was added to acknowledge National Board Certified Teachers or MBCT status. In April of 2021, teacher pay grades were reclassified by one grade each to reflect local market conditions. This action moved the pay grades on the aforementioned slide from the range of 28 to 30 to 29 to 31. Currently, grade 29 represents teachers holding a bachelor's degree, which is approximately 38% of the HCPS teacher population. Grade 30 represents teachers holding a bachelor's degree plus MBCT status or teachers who hold a master's degree. 59% of the HCPS teacher population fall into this category. Grade 31 represents teachers who hold a master's degree plus MBCT status, and roughly 1% of our teachers fall in that category. The beauty of the 2022-2023 Teacher Classification Structure through the lens of the Career Ladder is that it allows for an additional pathway to a higher pay grade that does not require teachers to complete a degree program. For example, a teacher on a 29 with a bachelor's degree could achieve a grade 31 plus two steps through successful completion of a specially-designed professional learning pathways, which will be outlined later in the presentation. It is important to note that while most of the reference of the Career Ladder thus far has been on teachers, other eligible staff will be included for the 22-23 school year. This slide shows a breakdown of staff who are classified as teachers on the left and those who fall under other eligible staff on the right side of the screen. Plans to expand the opportunity to staff outside of the two categories will be shared at a later date. Another important feature of the Career Ladder is that it recognizes other advanced degrees and certifications, such as doctoral degrees, trade certification, and degrees of highest standing for professionals, such as BCBAs, nurses, occupational therapists, physical therapists, school psychologists, school social workers, speech-language pathologists, and audiologists. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Weston, who will highlight the aspects of the professional learning available in the Career Ladder.
Through the Career Ladder, teachers will see an expansion of HCPSU, Henrico's online site for personalized professional learning. For the past
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I want to go.
Just got to exit next. I can't fucking do it for you real quick. And then you're going to use this one. For the past two years, HCPSU has been the one-stop source for teachers to explore both required and optional learning opportunities. We know that teaching quality and school leadership are important factors in raising student achievement. For teachers and leaders to be as effective as possible, they must continually expand their knowledge and skills to implement the best educational practices for all students. This is accomplished by meaningful and robust professional learning. The expansion of HCPSU provides a broader menu of professional learning options, both synchronous and asynchronous, that support and promote the continuous growth of our teachers and staff. Also new to HCPSU is the introduction of micro-credentials, a suite of professional learning activities that serve as entry points for enrolling in a specialization. Micro-credentials are competency-based courses or experiences that provide 30 or more hours of targeted learning on a specific topic or learning series. Recognized HCPS micro-credentials are staff-created, facilitated, and provide flexible learning options. In addition, micro-credentials created by the Virginia Department of Education and by education organizations that meet HCPS criteria may also be approved for entry into a specialization. Specializations represent a venue for teachers to participate in adult learning tailored to their work at Henrico as a way to grow professionally while earning additional compensation and professional recognition. Specializations build on a blended learning cohort model with a combination of in-person and virtual meetings that occur outside of contractual hours, similar to a master's class, and include practical application of new knowledge and skills. Aligned with the principles of adult learning, teachers select their area of interest and through job-embedded coursework are immediately able to transfer knowledge learned to practice in their classrooms. Teachers receive one pay grade increase for each successfully completed specialization, up to and including pay grade 31. They may also receive a two-step increase if they are already on grade 31 for completing a specialization or an advanced degree. Ultimately, the Career Ladder provides a myriad of opportunities to include an expanded professional learning menu for teachers to explore, time and compensation for teachers to lend their expertise to the development of micro-credentials and specializations, compensation for teachers who serve as adjunct faculty for HCPSU with a stipend for each semester of teaching, teacher leadership positions with reduced class loads where teachers, after completing at least one specialization, can expand their professional expertise to support instructional practices across their school. Leadership no longer has to be a pathway out of the classroom. The Career Ladder ensures that teachers have an opportunity to grow professionally through newly-developed pathways, encouraging them to lead from the classroom, working with both students and adult learners. The fiscal year 2023 recommended budget includes 3.1 million in Career Ladder funding for professional learning, micro-credentialing, and specializations, teacher support and provisionally licensed cohorts, salary adjustments for advanced professional credentials, and reimbursements for tuition and relicenser costs. While much stakeholder feedback was gathered from employee groups two years ago, it will be important to reintroduce and communicate this plan to our current staff. This will be accomplished through communication to stakeholder groups, including teachers, advisory teams, school leaders, and all staff impacted by the Career Ladder. It is important to remember that what we have outlined today is just the beginning of the HCPS Career Ladder. We look forward to expanding opportunities to include additional groups in the future. And at this time, I think Ms. Bowden and Ms. Jackson and Mr. Wack are going to join us to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I love the collaborative effort here across departments, just like we ask our students to do. Reverend Cooper, I'm going to begin with you.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Thank you for that presentation. I think it was a definitely apropos, coming right behind what we just saw from our two HR leaders in regards to our intentional creative efforts in assessing and addressing what they did. But now you all are coming back in a very specific to our workforce as far as not just our teachers, but the plethora of people that were listed that were eligible for what we're presenting today. So I want to just applaud you all for kind of just intentionality in regards to career pathways as well as career choices. Like you keep saying, everybody does not want to just ascend to leadership. They would rather be micro more so with the students than they would be as far as administrators. When persons talk to me about aspirations, you know, let's just hypothetically say, if you're a teacher, you touch 30 people. If you're a building leader, you touch hundreds of people. If you are superintendent, you touch thousands of people. It just depends upon which person you want to be. I'm appreciative that the teachers with the bachelor's degree, that advancement is not limited to only the attainment of a master's, doctorate, or MBCT status. I think that becomes cumbersome for some people who may not at this point want to pursue those avenues, but still want the opportunity for advancement as well as career satisfaction. Also, I think it's important that we reiterate that teachers may advance to higher pay grades through completing our specially-designed professional learning pathways. And so thank you for sharing that as well. Can you kind of just speak to you all's perception of how our staff are receiving the various opportunities we're presenting? Are they excited about it? You know, do they see the value in it? Do they feel as though we are addressing specific needs that they have as well in regards to their personal growth and development?
So while I don't have, I feel like I can't see you, Reverend Cooper. While I don't have specific, while I don't have specific data on that, I will tell you over two years ago, like I said when we started this, there were several of us that went on the road show, if you will, and we went to high schools and we had forums where staff were able to give us feedback and people were just very, very excited. Because I think, to your point, teachers who have bachelor's degrees or master's degrees who, for whatever reason, did not have any desire to get another advanced degree, felt like that they do engage in many types of professional learning that improves their craft every day. And the thought of being able to be recognized for that and being valued and respected for that was a very big selling point. And I do believe it will go very far in recruiting and retaining. It'll set us apart from our, you know, counterparts in the region, as I said earlier. So I think there's going to be, you know, much excitement across the division for being recognized for their work.
I can also add that when we started this process, we did a lot of research in looking at information from other school divisions across the country who have career ladders in place. And then very quickly had a group of Henrico teachers as an advisory committee. And I should say, in that very large group of over 70 teachers on just the advisory, we had retired teachers, first-year teachers, teachers who had left the profession, teachers representing every magisterial district to have a very strong voice in creating. And the voice of our teachers really reflected the research, especially the research from the Department of Education that stated that they want career advancement opportunities to be in line with other professions. So you may be a 20-year educator, but you want an opportunity to explore options while you could remain in the classroom. And you could have that impact on the adult learners in the school as you do with your students.
I appreciate that. I mean, again, for me personally, you know, this is so important for us to always share with our staff how important they are to us and anything we can do to constantly evolve and to be, again, the employer of choice, I think it will take us a long way. Can you all speak quickly, just briefly, about HCPU? I love what it's doing. I love, you know, what it's about. Can you kind of just speak to participation from staff as far as them engaging HCPU and utilizing the benefits that it provides?
So HCPSU came into, came to be as a result of COVID and our response to teachers and that one-stop source for professional learning. So while we have a lot of instructional resources in there at this time, the summer is when it has been hit most by the information and resources provided by our content specialists. In addition, the professional learning team has had professional learning opportunities available throughout, again, synchronous and both asynchronous formats for teachers to participate in. We're really excited as this site continues to develop. You'll hear more about how it will expand through our teaching and learning framework. We really are creating one place where our teachers can go for any type of resource of professional learning that they need.
Well, thank you so much, you two, for sharing that. I'm excited to hear the progress, as well as I stated with Ms. Jackson and her efforts with Ms. Bowden. So thank you so much. Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Augburn?
Thank you. I'm going to repeat myself just a little bit here because it was said earlier that we're being innovative and leading the way. I mean, seriously, yes. But I remember years ago, and Reverend Cooper will remember this, we were at a meeting with the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Vitulkas made a comment. He said, "Have you ever considered career ladders like we have on the county side?" And we got into this big discussion about career ladders and the Unified Pay Plan and how this, you know, makes our both sides a little bit more aligned by doing something like this. And it's, you know, I'm probably one of the older people in the room, and so I've been hearing about this forever, about what teachers want to be able to advance. But self-improvement is so important and being able to feel good about yourself, doing your job to the best of your ability, and like I said earlier, honing your skills. And it is very similar to what is out there in the corporate world. And so for me, that's exciting. But I am especially glad to see that it's come back, that we're reimbursing tuition costs, making this an affordable way, you know, having our in-house classes and stuff. Like you said, Tracy, a lot of it's over the summer. But some of these things were subject to budget cuts in years past, and having this come back as a reimbursement when you take a class, that is something that's attractive to retaining our teachers and to recruiting them, I would think. So I'm really excited about this and where it can go, where it can lead. And if you can give us feedback as you go forward, what you're hearing, and again, we may have to tweak it as it goes on, you know, it's new, but I'm really excited. So I appreciate all the work. I really do. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
Well done. I'm very, very pleased to learn more about this effort and the opportunities to grow professionally, the monetary opportunities are huge. That helps with decision-making. And so very pleased to see that added and the alignment with the input you've received. So many of us talked to many educators and we hear a whole lot. And, you know, my comment of "well done" is because what I have heard in the conversations I've had are aligned with the results that I've seen in your presentation and the words that you spoke. So thank you very much and job well done. And I look forward as to what Mrs. Augburn shared. I do see there will probably be some changes. I can see some. But well done in your efforts on today and look forward to future efforts of tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Cancela?
Yeah, I'm just grateful. We, you know, we started this, we started this process and now we finally get to see it. I look forward to all the details, all the changes, as my colleagues have said, all the details of the plan, the numbers associated with everything, Mrs. Shay and Reverend Cooper. Actually, all of us love numbers up here, but just to see, one of my favorite, just to see it come to life and the plan details literally. I know that when this was posted, that's actually what I heard from some of our educators, that they were very interested in the details of it. But just very excited to finally see it. And, you know, I'm a big believer in relevant professional development and learning, and this is it. And my favorite line from your presentation is, "Leadership no longer has to be a pathway out of the classroom." Well, that's just an amazing thing because we can't afford for anyone to leave the classroom. We don't want you to leave the classroom. We know you're burnt out. And hopefully, we're going to help address those issues, right? But that's just, it says it all, you know? It's an opportunity for growth. And when I was doing some business research about, you know, how to recruit, retain, reward, you know, they're saying, and as Mrs. Shay said, work-life balance, right? It's not a degree program, right? It's not too much of a time commitment, and it's in areas of interest. How exciting is that? And just employees are looking for employers that support and empower them. We give you the Career Ladder. I mean, just thank you so much. Ms. Shay?
Thank you, Ms. Cancela. I wrote down the exact same quote as my favorite when Dr. Weston said that leadership no longer has to be a pathway out of the classroom. And I think that's what we're already seeing in our buildings. We see these like organic PLCs that just crop up, and that is where some of the most innovative instruction is coming from, but also some of the best teacher supports and student supports, right? These organically grown PLCs. And so as we look at how micro-credentialing could help support those things that are already happening to reward that, right? It's super exciting because we see leadership in the classroom. And I think what we're really, what this really gets to is leadership-level compensation doesn't have to make you leave the classroom. And I think that is why this is so important, and it loops back to treating and rewarding our educators like the professionals they are. I'll repeat myself from earlier, that our educators are skilled professionals, right? And this acknowledges that. And it can, and I'm hoping it will keep some of those master teachers in the classroom and not feel like they have to jump over to the administrative side, which some of them make great administrators, but some of them, their heart is still in the classroom and allows them to stay in the classroom, but still move forward in terms of like growing their career and their compensation, which I think is so important and so unique in our field. I think one thing that's going to be really, really important with this is communicating this with clarity. Dr. Cashwell has put so much work into, across our division, making things more transparent and digestible and understandable. And I feel like our compensation right now is still one of those things left behind that's still really money. Multiple times a year, I get emails. And as a staff member, when I was a staff member, I was confused about this too, and I didn't actually learn the difference until I was on the board, but that steps don't mean years. And I think that's one thing that is still not well communicated and it sounds like would still not be the case in this particular plan. And so I think as you all work with Mr. Wack and work with Ms. Cox on how do we clearly communicate to our staff, so that we're as transparent as possible as to how our compensation works and how this weaves in. And so I think that's going to be a challenge. I think it's a challenge we can overcome, but as we develop these conversations, we still have confusion about our current compensation plan that we've been in for a long time. And so communicating with clarity really where we are and how this weaves in, I think, will be of critical importance to our staff. And then the other thing, just making sure our micro-credentials that we kind of endorse and put in our career ladder are things that are really accessible to teachers. And I know HCPSU makes them accessible, you know, but also acknowledging some of our teachers pursue some really great additional programs outside of Henrico, either through a grant or an award, or, you know, they decide to invest their own money into, you know, something they're passionate about, you know, being able to reward that, but really making sure, you know, this HCPSU makes things that are accessible to our teachers that may not have those other opportunities, and also that there are things that really move the needle for our students and really impact what's happening in the classroom, right, as we think about it. And two that came to mind just to think about, in addition to kind of our instruction-rooted ones, are trauma-informed care. We have some of our educators that have become really versed in trauma-informed care, and that's such so important, especially now, and so looking at maybe how could we loop that into a micro-credentialing. And also dual enrollment eligibility. We know that, so I have a physics degree and I have a master's in education. I am not qualified to teach dual enrollment because I don't have master's credits in physics, right? So that's a different piece necessarily than a master's degree, but it's not quite a doctor, you know, it's just kind of that in the middle. But as we look for more opportunities for our students and we look at growing dual enrollment, I know one of our biggest barriers to that is educators that are qualified. And so if we could perhaps tie that into a micro-credential, that could provide some incentive to help either recruit those individuals or individuals that have that interest to go ahead and pursue those extra subject-level higher ed credits so that they would be eligible. And that's all.
Thank you for that feedback.
Oh, redirect to Mrs. Cancela from the Brooklyn District.
Yes. On our looking ahead slide, notify those receiving credential salary adjustments. What does this, what does this look like?
Yeah, so in the very near future, in collaboration, again, with all of the departments, we will be sending out a survey to the staff because we really want to make sure that we're capturing all the certifications and the degrees that the staff have. You know, some of our certifications and degrees, like our doctoral degree, we have not rewarded our teachers for that before. And so sometimes teachers may engage in those certifications or degrees and they don't, you know, notify Human Resources because there hasn't been a need. And so we want to make sure that we do everything we can to cast that wide net and to capture all of that information. And then once we have all of that information, we'll move forward with the compensation.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. And then you mentioned the provisional licensing as a part of this, and I did actually receive quite a bit of feedback regarding provisional licensures and just, what is the best way to say it? Just how hard these teachers are working and folks want to know exactly where are they working? And just what are the additional things put on top of these provisionally-licensed folks? And perhaps are they in some of our most challenged schools, right? I'd really like to receive more information about that.
Okay, we'll collaborate with Human Resources and, or do you want to answer now? Or you want to, we'll collaborate and get back to you.
I mean, it's partly recruit, retain, reward, it's partly Career Ladder.
Right, yes.
It's mentioned in here as well.
Absolutely.
What is, can you explain the Career Ladder piece?
Do you want me to speak to it, Kenya? The Career Ladder piece for provisionally-licensed? I mean, okay. So I think Kenya actually spoke to it in her presentation, but eventually what we're hoping to have is the six courses that are required for provisionally-licensed teacher. We will offer those through HCPSU.
Through HCPSU, okay.
Yes, we're not there. We, that is our hope, to be there hopefully for the first couple of courses by spring of next year.
By spring of next year.
And those will be taught by Henrico staff, HCPSU.
And those will be taught by Henrico staff, HCPSU adjunct faculty.
Okay. Thank you for that point of clarity. I mean, it was just the two presentations and the excitement. Career Ladder, how did it all fit in? Thank you so much.
I'm listening.
Thank you.
Ms. Consella, colleagues, anything else? We'll let you off the hook. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your great questions. I know we owe board members some follow-ups related to both the recruit and retain presentation as well as some details on the Career Ladder. And thanks again to all who have made this possible. And we look forward to continuing to communicate the fine details and, most importantly, to getting it implemented. So very exciting.